Let's please remain standing for a moment of silence for our servicemen and women serving our great country and also to protect our first responders. Thank you, may I have a seat? Yeah, and also let's take a moment to think of Virginia. Virginia had a little fall during the week. She's recovering and she is fine. She should be returning as soon as the doctor releases her. Next Village Board workshop, there will be no Village Board workshop meeting in August. The next Village Board meeting will be September 4th, 2018. At this time, I would like to speak a little bit about one of our first responders that has been serving this community for over forty-three years. He's a former Vietnam veteran. He's highly dedicated to the village of suffering. And I would like to recognize Mr. Bruce McClintock in receiving the Andrew Hagerty Award for outstanding service to his community. Mr. McClintock? Yep, that's you. Okay, next I have a resolution here for an appointment of Mr. Patrick McKeonan as a member of the zoning board of appeals. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. The term of office is until December 3rd.
It's on here.
Is it?
Yes, it's on here.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, next I have a resolution appointing Mr. Kari Adwa. Mr. Kari Adwa is in the audience today. Thank you for coming down. Mr. Adwa is a longtime Suffering Village resident and shows concern for his community throughout the year. And I would also like to make that appointment. Hereby appoint Mr. Kari Adwa as an ad hoc member of the zoning board of appeals effective August 6th, 2018 through December 3rd, 2018.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen? Twenty eighteen.
It's a two-year term.
The ad hoc is two years?
It is ad hoc.
Okay.
But if the appointment were made, so it's the first Monday of December 2019.
Right. Okay, Mr. Adwa, would you like to come up and be sworn in?
Please raise your white and take your oath. I, Kari Adwa, I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and the code of the village of suffering. And I will faithfully discharge the duty of ad hoc member of the zoning board of appeals. Discharge the duty of ad hoc member. Congratulations.
Actually, I want Pathetic to add agendas because they were drafted now. Some people are hired.
I have a couple additional agendas coming out if anybody wants them. Okay, let's move on to the fire department chief.
Good evening, we just have the three items on the agenda for tonight. We need your permission for the Hook and Ladder to take a truck to the Booton, New Jersey Parade on September 1st.
Okay, I have a resolution authorizing designated the Hook and Ladder Company and Fire Truck to participate in the Booton Parade. We resolve the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Hook and Ladder Company and Fire Truck to participate in the Booton, New Jersey Parade on September 1st, 2018. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
And then we have the two new members, Ryan Love, he's an over eighteen member for the Suffering Hook and Ladder, and Dylan Paul, an over eighteen member for the Host Company. They could be accepted by the board and put on your charts.
I have a motion to accept the new members, both over eighteen.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion passes.
And that's it, everything else is going.
All right, keep up the good work. Thank you. Thanks for having the guys come out.
So right now, I'm going to make a statement in regards to the Village, the Village of Suffering's water wells. The Village utilizes four wells in Ramapo Valley Aquifer to provide portable water to more than ten thousand people. Village of Suffering water is safe and there is an adequate supply of this vital natural resource. However, while the Village of Suffering water is safe for drinking, we are currently investigating the progressive increases in chloride levels being observed in our wells. Since the thruway interchange was constructed through the Village of Suffering, there's been an increase in chloride levels observed in our portable water wells. Further analysis of the data indicates that chloride levels have risen at an increasing rate. The accelerated rate, in particular since 2004, suggests the introduction of a new special cause and point source beyond chloride contributions from road salt such as the New York State thruway. The Village of Suffering is also investigating the rising chloride levels in the drinking water based on point source generators upstream. Since chloride is not historically a naturally occurring component at significant levels in water in the area, one must look outside, to outside sources as the cause. Many water systems see the swing effect of chloride levels as a result of the use of road salt during the winter and early spring. Sampling events often indicate a climb in chloride levels that drop during summer and fall, only to rise again and repeat the cycle. This ebb and flow of chloride values are observed in many water systems throughout the state. The Village of Suffering, however, does not observe a clear and consistent correlation with the seasons and road salt uses as the only potential source of the most recent increase in chloride in our wells. Utilizing root cause analysis techniques, all point sources should be investigated in order to implement mitigations to reduce or eliminate additional sources of chloride. One significant point, one significant point source that has been identified is a commercial scale poultry processing plant located in Orange County. This facility consistently uses up to twelve tons of salt per day in their process. The chloride discharge from this source enters the Ramapo Valley River Aquifer negatively affecting water downstream from their discharge. If this issue is not addressed, municipalities will have to continually invest in infrastructure to treat the ever-increasing concentrations of chloride being discharged by point sources in order to maintain acceptable water quality. Unfortunately, this issue was not addressed by previous administrations. As a result, I have assembled a team of technical water experts and professionals who are focused on finding solutions to our concerns. The team recently provided comment on the chloride issue at a hearing held in Orange County. At the hearing, I strongly urged the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to investigate all point sources that discharge chloride into the Ramapo River Aquifer. This is the only effective mitigation to reduce or eliminate chloride from significant point sources. Addressing point source contamination from the highest level possible will provide residents the continued opportunity to use and enjoy New York's plentiful water resources. The Village of Suffering will take whatever actions are required, including legal actions to protect the Village of Suffering's water supply. So that's a statement that I'm making here tonight. And in conjunction with the statement, what I have done is I was already in contact with the governor's office, Rockland County Department of Health, county exec Ed Day, Assemblywoman Ellen Jaffe, Senator David Calucci, Congresswoman Nita Lowey. So we're going to form, we have a technical team in place analyzing the chloride levels and collecting data along with the Village of Harriman, the Village of Monroe, and Orange County City District Number One, to see what we can do about these point sources that we have identified. And Orange County clearly identified as the poultry processing plant up in KJ, along with the possible point source of New York State thruway authority. So with that in mind, I just want to assure the public and everyone here tonight that the water is definitely, is safe and will continue to be safe and that we are addressing the rising levels of chloride, sodium chloride. Thank you.
Mayor? If I may?
Yes.
Based on the concerns you just raised and other related matters, I've observed, I respectfully request the Board of Trustees convene an executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss personnel matters that I believe must be addressed at this time.
Okay. So at the end of this meeting, we will convene an executive session in regards to personnel issues and the matters mentioned.
That would be done by separate resolution at the end of the meeting. Is there any intention to come out of the executive session and vote on anything? Because that would require that we go back into regular order in order to take that action. You could take no votes in executive session.
I would imagine based on the discussions that evolved in the executive session will depend on if there's an action taken or not based on the input we receive.
Okay.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Well, Rob's not here. Excuse me, do the public hearing? Okay, it's now seven twenty-five. I'd like a motion to open up the public hearing to process, to propose amending chapter 254-68, Schedule 8, schedules to modify the location of loading zone, handicap, parking locations, and fifteen-minute parking locations in the central business district. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So as the mayor explained, the proposed local law is to amend a section of the code dealing with time limits for parking in certain locations on Suffering Place, Lafayette Avenue, and Chestnut Street, as well as adding handicap parking spaces to Lafayette in two spots and adding additional loading zones on Lafayette and Suffering Place. Additionally...
Oh, Rob's coming in now.
Excuse me?
Rob is here.
Oh.
There he is. All right, you can finish it up. What Rob could talk about.
No.
There he is.
Last week, we also had an issue come up, which I think should either be added to this by virtue of a continuation of the public hearing or dealt with separately, but we do have a school located on Suffering Place and the board should consider putting up requisite safety signs for the school.
All right, Rob. Okay, I literally just walked in when you said Rob, so I don't know what you started or didn't, but Amy and I walked through the village and, I'm sorry, I forget the other person, Tracy, finding spots that needed to be moved around based upon need, based upon, you know, the timing, whether they should be fifteen-minute spots, handicap spots, things of that location, so of that nature, I'm sorry. We have locations in there, it's only a few spots moved around, creating fifteen-minute spots were indicated on Suffering Place, Lafayette, and Chestnut. Handicap spot on Lafayette, or two of them were indicated, and a couple of loading zones. So because of the way the code is set up, we have to do it by local law, so that's what we did. This is really the first, we're not going to ask you to vote on it tonight, just to get input really from the community. The locations are on there. I don't, I'm not sure if you spoke to the particular owners of the businesses nearby so that they knew what the plan was, but this, the intention all along was to just kind of have this out there tonight and then come back in September after people had an opportunity to absorb it and see what they think.
So also, just to make the public aware that we did receive numerous complaints in regard to the loading zones on Lafayette Avenue blocking the businesses and extended stories of unloading and loading with trucks blocking, blocking the businesses. Also, we'd like, we would like to take, Mr. McGreehan, we'd like to take a look at Bonner Circle to be reviewed outside, Bonner Circle right off of, right near the park, near the Bachi Bowl Park.
Understood.
That'd be an area of concern also, we've been receiving some complaints about.
Sure, I'll talk to Amy about that and see if either if we add it or have to do a separate local law, but...
And the Suffering Place signs for, for the school.
Right.
I don't know what the requirement is, if it's a school zone or a reduced speed limit.
Yeah, we didn't look at that, but we can make it part of it. The only thing I would ask you to vote on, I'm not sure if you voted on this before, is resolutions to circulate, you know, Lafayette to be extended to consider a state road. You know, we want to circulate that to state DOT so that they can at least have some input. And also county planning since we're going to send to the state, we should send to them as well.
Okay.
So I have a resolution there if, you know...
Would I adopt that tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
But I will circulate it. I have a resolution in...
Okay, would you like to read it?
Sure, it just says, I'll summarize where the zoning code of the Village of Suffering provides for parking regulations in chapter 254 entitled Vehicles and Traffic, whereas the Suffering Parking Department has reviewed the current configuration of parking regulations in downtown Suffering area and has suggested changes to Article 8 regarding schedules. And the Village Board will be reviewing a proposal local law to amend Article 8 regarding schedules. Upon review, the board makes the following determinations... pursuant to SECR, and that the proposed local law be circulated to Rockland County Department of Planning, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Rockland County Highway Department for the purposes of a GML 239 L&amp;M review, and that the board hold a public hearing on September 4th.
Seven oh five.
For proposed local law to amend chapter 25, Vehicles and Parking, Article 8, titled Schedules of the Code of Suffering, provide for relocation, addition of restrictions regarding handicap time limit and loading zones. And we have enough time to circulate it. I can email it out tomorrow, the next day, so we got the thirty days.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I don't know if you wanted to get a public comment tonight about...
Yeah, right, so is there anyone from the public that would like to comment this evening? Okay.
Just to be clear, what was just adopted is a separate resolution which sets forth that the Village is lead agency under SECR, that it's a type-two action not requiring any additional environmental review, and that the local law that is the subject of this public hearing will be continued and not adopted tonight. But we are right now in the public hearing section on this local law for tonight. So you can either speak tonight about it, or it sounds to me like the board is going to continue the public hearing and you'll have an opportunity on September 4th to speak to it, hopefully in its final form.
Okay.
Carol Verona, Suffering. It's not just Lafayette Avenue, but the whole entire village. I think if we initiate a law, it should include the whole entire business district, take it into consideration, because just what happens here along Main Street can also impact other side streets and businesses along the way. So...
Okay, we were analyzing the majority of the central business district, but we'll take into consideration looking at other streets and side roads and impacts.
Yeah, even other businesses further up the street, because I've noticed where at times trucks have had to unload and couldn't get into where they're supposed to unload because they were blocked and ended up moving further up blocking other businesses.
Right.
So I think you have to kind of take the whole picture in.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, do I have a motion to continue the public hearing until Tuesday, September 4th, at seven oh five?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Police Department update, Chief Osborne.
Okay, Mayor and Board, I just got a very brief update. In July, we had five hundred, we responded and handled five hundred and fifty-six police calls and plaudits for the month of July. All three of our part-time officers which were previously hired have been cleared by the Rockland County Department of Personnel, and they are all on the road in training at this time as of today. We are holding a school supply drive, which is something we've done in the past. We didn't do it last year, we got wrapped up with some other stuff, but there is a need to our local schools, so we're going to be collecting numerous items. We put our Facebook pages together and we've been marketing it and it's going very well, great response that'll assist our local village students who can use them. And today, in a good way this morning, we got notified that the Village of Suffering is, we were named in the top fifty safest communities in the state. We actually came in number twenty-one out of over five hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
But we're top in Rockland County, so it's great, big department. I appreciate that, that's due to the hard work of the men and women of the department working around the clock, supporting everybody here, and we're very proud of that to come in that high and basically top in the county. So thank you for everything and I'll be it for the duration.
Great job, thank you. Okay, Ms. Kathy Mills is not here, but Vincent Karate Foundation Softball Tournament starts August 9th. The pool will be closing September 3rd. Midget Mountain Barbecue and Bonfire will be on September 7th. The Dog Show and Celebrate America at their Hockey Rankin Yorkshire Drive is Saturday, September 8th, eleven to two. The 9/11 Ceremony will be September 11th at Donna Hallett Park at 7:00 PM. Rec Board Meeting is September 13th at 7:00 PM. Primary election, September 13th, no programs at Leo Leiden or the Community Center. The Suffering Street Fair is September 16th. Suffering Day is September 22nd. Daytime activities, eleven to three. Evening entertainment and fireworks at the Suffering Ballfields. Okay. Grant Rider is not here this evening. Okay, this time I'd like to open it up to audience participation. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak? Come up to the podium and say your name and address.
Hi, my name is Ira Oak, and I live on 21 Hillside Avenue for about thirty years. In the past, I've been here to talk to you guys about John and Zalmo, the guy who has a junkyard in his backyard, who had a dumpster in his front yard for a year. As about two weeks, another dumpster was delivered to the house. another dumpster was delivered to the house and it's now in the backyard. He's started collecting junk and putting it under black tarps, and it's insane. Now, we've been in contact with the Health Department and they've decided to let him back in the house. Somebody comes and opens the house in the morning, he's supposedly cleaning the house out. I find this really hard to believe because the dumpster that sat in the front yard for a year had nothing in it. He has a car in the driveway that's so full of stuff, you can't see out of any of the other windows. I think that it makes sense for our next meeting to get somebody from the Board of Health here. I mean, the last person that I spoke to freely admitted I'd be horrified if he was my next door neighbor, and then also admitted there are mental health issues, and also admitted things like this can take years. So I think that it's time that the people that are kind of running the show show up here, we can ask them questions, so it just doesn't become this ridiculous-
I think that's a great idea.
Ridiculous cycle, you know? I mean, you know, he can be a smooth talker, you know, we've seen him stand up here, and they know this. I mean, I talked to his caseworker, I could talk to the manager, I have these people's telephone numbers, and you know, they're aware of all these things. But you know, this is insane. I mean, the orange placards that we put up, he now freely takes down. So I just want to let you guys know, it started again.
Okay, you know what we're going to do? We're going to follow up with that. We're going to see if we get the Board of Health down here. I'll get the building inspector to see what other avenues we can take.
Initially, they locked him out. Within two or three weeks, he broke into the house. They were aware of that. There was an order to board the house up. I've called, I've called Rockland County. They don't know what happened to that order. They said to call a couple of judges' chambers. I called a bunch of judges' chambers. You know, it's like, I feel like I'm fighting this fight alone, and you guys need to like really step up. This is just ridiculous. Plus, we just spent $10,000, right, to clean it up. And it's in full swing again. Thank you for your talk.
We will try again.
So I'm coming to you, my name is Andrea Klein. I also live on Hillside Avenue. I'm actually coming to you with a proposal for an ordinance that will help resolve some of these issues with dumpsters and with pods in the neighborhood. And that is that for each dumpster or pod, I was told to come to the meeting, you guys will take care of it.
Okay, we're going to try.
So here's my resolution, or proposal for a resolution or an ordinance, is that for each dumpster and/or pod that's on a Suffolk property, there be a permit. For each permit, it's a $100 charge, it's payable to the village. Perhaps it will enrich our coffers enough to open and have a second swimming instructor, who knows? But the exception would be, this is for residents, it's a month permit, i.e. you have a dumpster, you pay $100, that lets you have the dumpster pod for a month. There would be an exception for contractors and people that are redoing their houses. They can renew their permits, and I would leave that up to the board to decide how many times the permit can be renewed. It's an additional charge per month with, I would say, a time limit, that either that being six months, eight months, whatever the contractor would need. The contractor would have to fill out the permit with the village and provide his name and address and contact. That was one of the issues with Mr. Anzalmo is that the dumpster wasn't marked.
There's no information on that.
So we had no idea who did it. The dumpster company is responsible for the permitting. All existing dumpsters and pods would be given notice that they would have to get a permit and comply with this new ordinance resolution, whatever, and they're given a certain amount of time, either 30 or 60 days to comply. I would, my idea is to make it a heavy fee and a heavy fine for noncompliance, and that way people would comply. Knock on wood.
I think we started looking into portions of what you're talking about in regards to permitting it, and pods especially, and dumpsters. So we will continue on that. I think it's a great idea and it gives us more control over what's going on.
Right. My thing is that I want to see if something happened already.
Okay.
I mean, both Ira and I, no offense to you guys, have called and written and emailed, and all we're trying to do is present a positive solution, a win for the county, a win, sorry, for the village, to get more money as well as take care of this problem and be equitable to the citizens.
Yes.
I think that is it. I mean, I, you know, second, I was concerned about Mr. Anzalmo in that, you know, this is a continuing program. It's a problem, I'm sorry, it's been a problem for years.
It's been very, very challenging.
Years.
Yes.
I agree, it's challenging, but there are things that we can do as a village to take care of it and to resolve some of the issues. And I think one big step is that we need to, you know, have someone who is a point person here and let them talk to the Board of Health, because there doesn't seem to be any communication result, you know, around the issue, and that we sometimes work at cross purposes, and we should be working together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Paul Gerard, Two Cross Street. First, I wanted to congratulate Bruce McClintock on his achievement and Carrie Adoir on his appointment. Terrific news. I just got a couple of Cross Street items I wanted to bring up first. Back on July 1st, we had a, an individual, I can't say for sure he was drunk driving, but he's an alleged drunk driver, that was heading towards the back entrance of the condo building to meet a friend, and actually drove right through the backyard of my neighbor who was right next to that entrance. Drove through his fence, hit his house, tried to figure his way out of his yard in his alleged inebriated state, managed to drive back over the fence, strike his car, and duck into the garage in the condo building and hide out from the police until he allegedly sobered up. The reason I'm bringing this up, well, I mean, it was an unfortunate incident. I know that the police investigated this, but there is a telephone pole that is secured in the corner of that yard, which was struck by the car, and it's secured by three steel cables, and one of those cables was damaged. And I'd just like to understand if the village has any role in helping to get that repaired, and hopefully the cost charged to this individual. I don't, I don't know if.
Yeah, well, it depends on which, like if it's an origin Rockland pole or a telephone pole, we make contact with the company and they come out and make the repair.
Yeah, it's a risky situation, given that it's a damaged cable that's, you know, holding that.
Charles, can you take a look into that location?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Was there, do you know if there was a police report filed?
There was, we should put the person in custody.
Oh.
And one of our officers, that was, that was the.
Well, they weren't notified?
Yeah.
Do you?
I was on the phone with Paul that night, he quickly declared, he actually called, they asked for the investigation.
Do you know if that police report reflects the pole hit?
Uh, can we ensure that?
Can you check on that, and if it has to be revised? Yeah, just to be.
It was a little dangerous pole, and it was.
Yeah, just to be clear, they didn't hit the pole, but they hit the cable.
Oh, they hit the cable itself.
Yeah. Thank you. Also, a question on Parking Authority jurisdiction. A lot of people in Cross Street are getting courtesy reminder tickets from the Parking Authority about parking on the street, both during the day and overnight. Is that Parking Authority jurisdiction, or are they supposed to be monitoring metered parking and parking lot parking?
I can answer, if you will, they, they pretty much, they're going to refer you to check that out, and I'll ask them around. If they're parked illegally, definitely they're taking, they've been in their courtesy, because I explained to you, that's what we have, you're supposed to handle, and I've spoken about it twice this week. I've been in the chat for, I thought it was.
Yeah, we continue to get them, yes.
Right, so, and that was.
Yeah, that's the only reason why I'm bringing it up.
What was the latest, you know?
Uh, I'll check. It was in July, it was in July. Thank you. Last meeting, we didn't know where the 202 paving project stood relative to the sidewalks. I see that they're making their way down here now. Is the intention of, are we getting that project, the paving finished before the state crew leaves and then the sidewalks will be done later?
That, yes, that's what's taking place.
Okay. Village charity account for tax deductibility, any movement on this?
I believe Mr. Janito has some follow-up to that. In regards to the charitable donations for the taxes and the research and the other, was it White Plains or Rye who was doing it?
Rye.
Rye.
Yeah, we did a track through the state to see who else might be actually implementing this. NICOM was supposed to get back to us, New York Conference of Mayors, with some information, but recently in the Journal News, there was an article about the Town of Rye, that's not the city of Rye, it's Town of Rye, offering that program to their residents. To understand the Town of Rye, it's, it really consists of two public parks and a $700,000 budget, but in any regard, it's, they've decided to institute that within the Town of Rye.
So we'll be waiting on NICOM's response.
Ironically, the village that, and town that the governor lives in hasn't adopted anything yet either. Okay, well, I could say that the residents need the help on the tax burdens that continue to increase in this village, so while this isn't a burden that was brought on by the village, it's brought on by this new IRS code, but we have the power to alleviate the residents of that huge penalty. On July 19th, there was supposed to be a public hearing by the Zoning Board of Appeals for a four-story, 60-unit residential building to be built on Washington Avenue over by Pleasant Avenue. A lot of residents on my street and on Pleasant Avenue on that part of Washington received letters that the hearing was taking place, and we all got here and there was no hearing. There was no notice that it was canceled. I texted you, Mr. Mayor, that night because there were a lot of angry people. I got no response from you, I have not since. What happened that that was canceled and there was no communication to anybody? Because there were clearly a lot of people interested in that hearing. I think there were about 16 residents here, including myself.
They weren't able to meet a quorum and they failed to put up a notice. That's exactly what happened. I spoke to the clerk and it was discussed, and that's exactly what happened.
I'm sorry, who's "they"?
Who is "they"? The clerk, the zoning clerk.
So you're saying the zoning board couldn't get a quorum?
Yes.
Okay, and so there was, was that not known?
It wasn't known until that afternoon, I believe. Later on, late in the afternoon.
Did you know?
No.
And we did appoint, sorry, we did appoint two new members, so the-
To remedy the problem.
-that occurring again. Any knowledge if there's another hearing being scheduled? Because there were a lot of interested people in that hearing.
Yes, there is. Mr. Magrino, you have the dates on that hearing?
I believe it's, I'm sorry, it's not the 16th. What hap, just so everyone knows, yes, because of the resignation on the ZVA and then something came up for another member, we weren't able to get a quorum that day and just do a search. But the next meeting is the 30th, Thursday, August 30th, and they are required to re-notice the meeting. They're going to do a whole new notice, so everyone will be notified because of what happened. But what ended up happening, some people, the meeting was basically moved to the Monday, which was, what, the 27th maybe? Because there were some people there who wanted to be heard, they were heard.
Right.
But the meeting was put over to the 30th with the requirement that it be re-noticed just because of what had happened with the failure to post and everything else, so.
Okay.
So it will be re-noticed and reheard.
Thank you.
Okay, in the May 7th Board Meeting, passed a resolution authorizing Hudson Valley Operations Management Consultants to provide guidance on capital projects. Is there any update we can get as residents on what capital projects are being managed or this consultant is overseeing?
That'd be the wastewater infrastructure upgrades and repairs, water upgrades and repairs with the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery. Those are the two major ones.
Okay, and I know it says here that this is, the services are being provided for a five-month period at a cost of $1. But, you know, as a resident, I'm a little uncomfortable with this arrangement because Mr. Leejoy is the husband of Amy Patton-Roth, and it just seems like there's a bit of a conflict of interest here with you, Mr. Mayor, and the deputy clerk, and the person in charge of this consulting and overseeing projects like this that are very, you know, significant to the village. How do we as residents know that we're not paying anything more than a dollar for the services and, or any other influences that we have on these projects?
How do we know?
Yeah, as residents, yeah.
There's no, there's no paid paycheck cut to him, there's no benefits paid to him, there's, he's doing it as a concerned resident.
No one's been hired?
No one's been hired officially. He's providing great oversight for the village. It's just a win-win for the village.
Okay, I just, I'm concerned that a consultant's spouse is an employee of yours that hears, has your ear all day long and then, you know, can potentially go home and, you know, I guess, I guess, share information or, you know, give an indication of what direction the village might want to go with some of this stuff.
Okay.
So you can assure us there's no, there's no payments being made?
Absolutely.
Okay, no unusual payments made to Ms. Patton-Roth?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jim Genitino to Memorial. On this Orange County Chicken Factory, do you have any knowledge of them treating this water or they're just dumping it into the river?
It's being processed through the Curious Joe Wastewater Treatment Plant.
It is being processed.
The discharge from the chicken plant is going to Curious Joe Wastewater Treatment Plant.
And they're still putting that much chlorine into our river?
They don't treat for sodium removal, sodium chloride removal in wastewater.
So then they're not, they're actually not treating?
Correct.
So it's going through the flamp, but they're just running it like regular water?
Yes.
So they're not treating it. Last month, I reminded you about speed bumps on Memorial Drive?
Yes.
Did we lose them? Cost the season...
No, there seems to be a problem with the way they're able to affix them into the asphalt, into the macadam. The macadam will not hold them. It will not, it doesn't have the, the holding power to hold the spike in there.
But we've had them there for years.
I know.
Okay, another thing, I was online and I read that our PBA has lost patience on their contract. I think after 27 months, it's long overdue that you sit down and negotiate a contract with them.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, next up will be Village Treasurer, Mr. Genito.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. We only have one item, which is a recommended resolution to the Board to authorize an engineering firm, KC Engineering and Land Surveying, to conduct an engineering study and resulting report for the wastewater treatment plant Digestor Boiler Replacement Project in the amount of $6,250. The reason why we are making this request is because the Environmental Facilities Corp., which can provide beneficial financing, both short-term and long-term to us, originally indicated that we would not be able to finance this particular project through them. They have since given us an email, actually, that said they may be able to finance it, but they would need an engineering report in order to properly review it. And so that's why we are making this request.
Okay, so I have the resolution before I may authorizing KC Engineering to proceed with engineering services for the preparation of the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Required Engineering Report. We resolve the Village Board hereby authorizes KC Engineering and Land Surveying, 2142 Route 302 Circleville, New York, to proceed with engineering services for the preparation of New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation's Required Engineering Report for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Digestor Boiler Replacement Project, 2018-001, the amount of $6,250. Do I have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zawicki, Department of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
I would provide an update on the New York State DOT Route 202 paving project. Work started last night, milling, milling operation, and that project is, was revisited to relook or take another look at the work activities to try to put them in such a, put them, schedule them in such a way that the full duration of that project would be shortened. So the milling, as I said, started last night, will continue tonight, and then go into, as they have indicated with good weather, that project in that section should conclude on Sunday, August 12th. So that's their projection based on good weather.
Okay.
The sewer plant internet access, I have no information and no update on that. I know Mr. Genito was working on an RFP for that. I don't have any update on that. The parking lot camera system, RFP, was sent out to seven contractors, and we, it was due last week and we got no response. So what I'm meeting with a couple of those contractors, one is tomorrow, another one later this week, to go over to see what could be modified that would make more sense than you have worked on. I am requesting authorization to allow Mr. John Conklin and Mr. Steve Cottiers to attend the Hudson Valley Waterworks Conference on Wednesday, August 8th, 2018, in Walden, New York, at a cost of $30 each. Four hour, four contact hours will be awarded for required continuing education.
I have a motion, I have a resolution authorizing John Conklin and Steve Cottiers to attend the Hudson Valley Waterworks Seminar, August 8th, 2018, in Walden, New York, at a cost of $30 per person. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization to prepare a request for proposal, RFP, for the Phase II Sanitary Sewer Abatement Design, I'm sorry, Sanitary Sewer Abatement Design Project for Professional Services. The proposal is due at the end of business on August 27th, 2018. This is a, one of the consent order, New York State DEC Consent Order Project.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to solicit a professional service request for proposal for Phase II Sanitary Sewer Abatement Design Professional Services, due the end of business, August 27th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Be advised that the Village of Suffolk Superintendent of Public Works will submit the proposal, RFP document for review by the Village Attorney and the Capital Projects Committee members prior to its publishing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I have been invited by the New York State DEC to participate in the MS4 Stakeholder Work Group Subcommittee. I am requesting authorization to participate in a conference call held on August 14th, 2018, and three to five in-person meetings in Albany, scheduled at two to three-week interviews, with additional conference calls as needed.
Okay, I have the resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to participate in the New York State DEC MS4 Stakeholders Work Group Subcommittee Activities. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crash Allen.
Thank you. I have a resolution I'd like the Board to consider to authorize Wesley Rice and/or Kyle Steinle from JCO to have signatory authority for what's called the NET DMR reports, which are required to be submitted to the New York State DEC. These reports are with regard to the wastewater treatment plant, and I believe they're submitted quarterly, and at this juncture, we don't have individuals who are authorized to do that, so we do need to have people with signatory authority. So, resolution authorizing Wesley Rice or Kyle Steinle to have signatory authority for NET DMR reports submitted to the New York State DEC with regard to the wastewater treatment plant. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one really relates to something I already brought up when we were talking about parking and handicap parking for a public hearing that is going to be continued to September 4th. It had to do with school zone signage on Suffolk Place. If it turns out that it's a separate section of the code that we would have to amend, just in case, I recommend that we set a public hearing for October 1st, 2018, at 7:10 p.m. to consider school zone signage on Suffolk Place and to amend the village code to reflect that. So can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, motion passes. Okay. Ms. Bertolino.
Yes. I wanted to further discuss the hiking, the parking for the people that are hiking in our area, some maybe better options for them.
So that's what we were looking at, that we've received numerous people calling in in regards to parking and making it more visible for the hikers that are driving into the Village of Suffolk to designate a specific spot. So we've been going through the village and trying to identify a couple of spots in like the A Lot and the D Lot, right, the A Lot and the D Lot. So that's part of our outlook overall with parking, and we're going to include the hikers' parking in that.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Hagan?
All right, I have in front of me a resolution authorizing the Suffolk Lions Club to hold a third annual dog show on Saturday, September 8th, from 11:00 to 2:00 at Yorkshire Park.
From 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.?
Right. I mean, would be a resolve?
No. I'll make a motion. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Mr. Russo?
We're continuing with the Know-Not Online Sign up process. Just to remind everyone, you can sign up online at the Parking Authority or in the Village Clerk's office.
Perfect. Next, I have a resolution appointing Kim Peters, Data Entry Operator 2, an assistant in the Suffolk Justice Court, whereas the Village of Suffolk has a competitive class position of Data Entry Operator 2, and whereas the Commissioner of Rockland County personnel approved the position of Data Entry Operator 2 and provided the Village of Suffolk a list of eligible candidates. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor hereby appoints Ms. Kim Peters to the position of Data Entry Operator 2 at a pay rate of $18 per hour effective August 20th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion passes. Next, I have a resolution authorizing Matthew Olson to conduct an Eagle Scout project in Brooklands Park in honor of Daniel Carter Beard, co-founder of the Boy Scouts of America. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next, resolution authorizing Tyler Capriati to conduct an Eagle Scout project in Brooklands Park in honor of Daniel Carter Beard, co-founder of the Boy Scouts of America. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion passes. Okay, thank you for coming out to the meeting this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to adjourn, motion to go into an executive session.
Motion.
Second? Any further discussion? We don't know, as we stated earlier, if there will be any actions taken. After you feel, you can feel free to stay, we will reconvene out here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, motion, exit, executive session, we're all here.
And the time?
Motion.
8:33, motion to exit executive session.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have another motion?
You have another motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Any discussion? There was no action taken in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Good night.